Okay, thank you. Hi, everyone. Hello. Welcome back, welcome back. This is our, of course, our first regular meeting back after a bit of a summer recess, so that we did have the opportunity to be together for a special meeting as well. So, welcome back, welcome back to my council colleagues, welcome back to Kim in the BevCam booth, and welcome back to those who are joining us here in the chamber as well. I always like to just go over our agenda briefly before officially calling the meeting to order, so that we all have a sense of what's happening for the evening. So, tonight, we do have some discussion presentation from the mayor conversation about the Republic strike. When we get to that part, I will ask for a motion to take the agenda out of order, so we can have both that conversation leading right into an executive session at the end of the meeting, so that folks are not waiting here for us to come back and forth in executive session. But we'll take that up when we come to it. Then, we do have just some routine business to get us back into the flow of our council year. We'll take a brief break for some subcommittee work. We'll come back to finish that up, and then, as I said, we will have that conversation with the mayor, and then, executive session from which we will not return to open session. I'll repeat all of that at the end, when we get to that point. So, with that, I will officially call to order this regular meeting of the Beverly City Council, Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025, 7:00 PM. Ms. Kent, will you please call the roll? Bowen?
Here.
Crowley?
Here.
Feldman?
Here.
Housman?
Here.
Rotundo?
Yeah.
Spang?
Yes.
Saint-Hilaire?
Here.
Sweeney?
Here.
And Flowers?
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. Counselor Rotundo, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Legions? And I'd ask that we remain standing for a moment of silence for Ellen Hutchinson, who was our Planning Board Chair, who recently died.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Counselor Rotundo, and thank you to all of us for that moment of silence. We haven't had the chance to take a moment of silence in a regular meeting since Ellen's death. Ellen died on July 6th, at 64 years of age, following some complications from cancer. And so, as my council colleagues know, but as folks watching may also know, Ellen has been an extremely involved member of the Beverly community, before serving as Planning Board Chair. And of course, we've done joint public hearings here with Ellen and her colleagues. She also served on the Planning Board for many years, and, in addition, finds many, found many other ways to give to her community, and was an incredibly constant presence in her family, never missing family occasions and gatherings. And so, she will be much missed, certainly by her family and her friends, and then by our broader community. So, we hold Ellen's family and friends in our hearts at this time as well, and so, thank you for that moment of silence. I wanted to also mention our Assistant City Clerk, Katie Dupont, graduated from NEMSEE recently and received her CMC, and that's a big accomplishment, of course, for municipal clerks. And so, Katie, congratulations, I think, a round of applause and thanks. Congratulations, Ms. Dupont, that's a big milestone, and we're all very excited for you, and nice to have this chance to recognize it again in our first regular meeting, to be back. Thank you. So, with that, then, I will take a motion now to take the agenda out of order, as I mentioned, so that we can take up that discussion in open meeting with the mayor about the Teamsters Local 25 Strike and Delivery of Services by Republic Services Incorporated, leading into a proposed executive session, both at the end of our time, so that we don't have folks waiting for us, as I said, to come and go from executive session. That first part of the conversation will be in open meeting, so folks can follow it on BevCam or here. If we do vote to have the executive session, that would be the final part of our meeting. So, is there a motion to take the agenda out of order? All those in favor? Thank you, that carries 9-0, so we will return to those items. And now, we will go to acceptance of minutes of previous meetings. We do have one set of meeting minutes that we can approve this evening, that's from our regular city council meeting from June 2nd, 2025. Is there a motion to approve? All those in favor? Thank you very much, that carries 9-0. And I just wanted to take a moment and also just recognize some of our city staff who are here, and thank our city grants director, Catherine Barrett, is here with us this evening. Thank you, Ms. Barrett. Our city solicitor, Beth Oldmixon, is here with us as well. Thank you for joining us, Solicitor. And I do see that we have Ward 2 School Committee Member, Kitty Ann McKenzie DeFranza, is with us as well. Thank you for being with us this evening. Ms. Kent, why don't we go to Communications from His Honor, the mayor, please?
Order number 215, a grant for a Child Passenger Safety Education Assistance Program Grant to provide 70 child safety seats, car seats, directly to the Beverly Fire Department.
Please refer that to the Committee on Finance and Property.
Order 192, a grant for $25,300 for the Mass Department of Mental Health Jail Arrest Program Grant for fiscal year 2026.
Please refer that to the Committee on Finance and Property.
Order 193, a grant for $143,500 for Massachusetts Department of Mental Health Grant to continue funding the North Essex County Training and Technical Assistance Center Crisis Intervention Training Program at the Beverly Police Department.
Please refer that to the Committee on Finance and Property as well.
Order number 194, an appointment for Joanna Murphy Scott of Levin Princeton Street to serve on the Design Review Board.
Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs.
Order 195, an appointment for Emily Hutchings, 68 Essex Street, to serve on the Design Review Board as the Historic District Commission Representative.
Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs as well.
Order 196, a reappointment for Joyce Frisello of 62 Hathaway Avenue to serve on the David Lynch Public Park Trustees.
Please refer that to the Committee on Public Services.
Order number 197, a reappointment for Mark Flag at 36 Hale Street to serve on the David Lynch Public Park Trustees.
Please refer that to the Committee on Public Services as well. The next one has just a clerical error here on the agenda, it is labeled correctly on your order number, councilors, so it is order number 198.
Order 198, a reappointment for Kathy Doan of 83 Bisson Street to serve on the Daniel Lynch Park Trustees.
Please refer that to the Committee on Public Services.
Order 199, a reappointment for Nancy Marino of Levin Wellman Avenue to serve on the Permanent Building Commission.
Please refer that to the Committee on Public Services also.
Order 200, a reappointment for Wayne Miller, 5 Pasture Road, to serve on the Open Space and Recreation Committee Planning Board Representative.
Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs. Let's go to Communications from other city officers and boards, please, Ms. Kent.
Order number 201, from the City Clerk, a request for approval of a change to the 2026 regular city council schedule.
Thank you, councilors, I would entertain a motion to approve order 201, as you have it in your packet, but with an amendment to make a second change, to move the November 16th meeting for 2026 to November 23rd, that would just allow us to have meetings a bit more spaced out, because we've got one that's, the original change is a pushback of one week because of the election. But then, to have them spaced out better, there is a fifth Monday, so if we were to move from November 16th, 2026, to November 23rd, it would allow us to have more of an every-other-week flow. So, this would be a motion to approve 201 as amended on the floor. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? That carries 9-0, thank you for that, and thank you, Ms. Kent, to you and your team for bringing that to us.
Order 202, from the City Clerk, an application for a license to peddle for Catherine Chazeldine.
Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs.
Order 203, from the City Clerk, a new application for a Class 1 Motor Vehicle Dealer's License for M A G Retail Holdings, F V V LLC, D B A McGovern Ford of Beverly at 420 Cabot Street.
Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs.
Order 204, from the City Clerk, a renewal application for a Christmas Tree Vendor License for John X. DeVincenzo, DiVincenzo, at 294 Elliott Street.
Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs.
Order number 205, from the City Clerk, a new application for a Class 2 Motor Vehicle Dealer's License for J.J. 22 Ventures Inc., D P A Beverly Car Care at 449 Cabot Street.
Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs as well.
Order number 206, from Counselor Spang and Counselor Housman, a proposed amendments to ordinance 270-49 for handicap parking.
Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs.
Order number 207, from the City Clerk, a request for approval to accept travel expenses to attend a P E I advocacy day.
Councilors, we could take a motion to approve order 207 on the floor, and then, any questions or discussion could happen then. Is there a motion to approve 207? Any further discussion or questions from the council? Counselor Sweeney?
Thank you, Madam President. I just have one question, which is a clarifying question, make sure that I understand correctly. Based on my read of the order, it sounds like the outside organization that was mentioned is covering all of the costs that are outlined for attendance at the conference, is that correct?
Correct. We will not take any money from Beverly, and it's nonpartisan, just to get money for future elections that have been kind of taken away from us. So, a lot of the clerks all around the country are going to meet there and talk to the congressman, and everything is paid for through the P E I advocacy.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Kent, and I think it's a great opportunity, and I'm glad to see you guys were able to bring that outside funding in to make it possible.
Thanks. Thank you, counselor. Any other questions or discussion from the council on this one? I was just trying to read your face, Counselor Bowen. Okay. Okay. So, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor? That carries 9-0, thank you.
Order number 208, from the Community Preservation Committee, C P C, to launch a grant round 13.
Thank you, this is, I would entertain a motion to receive this and place it on file, this is an informational update for the council. All those in favor? That carries 9-0, of course, as that round 13 continues on its process, we'll have the opportunity to hear more about that and to have a public hearing ultimately.
Order number 209, from Counselor Spang and Counselor Housman, for the N 192 Replacement Project Citizen Advisory Committee, an update of the second quarter of 2025.
Thank you, Counselors Spang and Counselor Housman, before we entertain a motion to receive and place on file, is there anything that either of you wanted to say or to note about this update? We appreciate your work on this. Counselor Spang?
Yeah, just note that removals of the old line are now pushed back to sometime in calendar year 2026, so for anybody following along, there's more delays.
Thank you. Not great news, but thank you for sharing it with us. Counselor Housman? You're all set, okay. I would entertain a motion to receive this update and place it on file. All those in favor? That carries 9-0, to receive and place on file, with our thanks to both Counselors Spang and Counselor Housman for their ongoing work following along with this advisory committee and keeping us informed as well. Let's go to Communications, Applications, and Petitions, please, Ms. Kent.
Order number 210, a letter from Paul Gentili.
This is a letter that brings up some questions about parking and some other downtown questions, and so, we'll refer that to Public Services for any discussion that subcommittee may want to have.
Order number 211, a notice of availability of summary of May 2025 meeting.
I would entertain a motion to receive this and place it on file. All those in favor? Carries 9-0.
Order number 212, from National Grid, petition number 31132319, West Dane Street.
Let's refer that to the Committee on Public Services to set a public hearing, please.
Order number 213, a public notice completion of the modified Phase 4 period for former ovarian facility site.
I would entertain a motion to receive this and place it on file. All those in favor? That carries 9-0.
Order number 214, the Department of Environmental Protection, issuance of a license at 275 Hale Street.
I would entertain a motion to also receive order 214 and place it on file. All those in favor? That carries 9-0 as well, thank you very much. We do have this unfinished business from a previous meeting, this is order 163, a proposed amendment to Chapter 69, Article 2, Section 69-9, City Personnel Sick Leave. Councilors will remember, this was a conversation that we had begun before the summer recessed, and there were some questions, and the mayor was going to bring back some updated information. At this point, we don't have any further information, so we'll retain this under unfinished business from our previous meeting, so we can move that conversation along at the appropriate time. I would entertain a motion now for us to take a brief break for some subcommittee work, and then we'll come back following that to finish up. All those in favor? So, we will, thank you, that carries 9-0, we will take that brief break, about 15 minutes or so for each subcommittee. If there's other work that remains, subcommittee chairs, I encourage you to use our other weeks for those subcommittee meetings. Yes, let's have Legal Affairs stay here in the chamber, Finance and Property, I think we can take our turn in the hall, and Public Services in the committee room. Thank you.
Good evening, councilors. Welcome to Legal Affairs. I call to order Legal Affairs, I think we're all set, just as a subcommittee, at 7:18 PM. I am going to hold, I guess I don't have it printed out, the proposed change to the rules. Yes, I'm going to hold Order 179. We cannot act on any of the appointments, and we have several applications for licenses, which we can, however, take up, and I've spoken with Ms. Dupont regarding sort of review of the bond questions and general compliance that we need to have, and we are all in order. So, I'll just take this in the order they show up on our full council agenda. The first order is Order 202, this is application to, for a peddler's license. This is for original paintings, prints, leather goods, and journals and so forth. Are there any questions from the subcommittee regarding this application?
Excuse me, thank you, Mr. Chair, just the normal ones, everything's in order, obviously, everything was checked, so.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve Order 202.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. Next item is on Legal Affairs, is application for a new Class 1 Motor Vehicles Dealer's License for property under the, doing business under the name of McGovern Ford of Beverly, property located at 420 Cabot Street. And likewise, as with the other applications this evening, Ms. Dupont has reviewed them, and they are in order administratively. Are there any questions regarding this application? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to approve Order 203.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. We have three more orders. Order number 204, this is a renewal application for a Christmas Tree License for John DiVincenzo, this is down on Route 62 by Zip's Ice Cream, where there has been a Christmas Tree vendor for years and years and years. Are there any questions regarding this renewal application? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion, Order number 204 carries 3-0. We have two more. The next one is Order number 205, a new application for a Class 2 Motor Vehicle License for business, doing business as Beverly Car Care, this is for a motor vehicle license at 449 Cabot Street. Are there any questions regarding this license? Yes.
I do, I just wanted, because it's been an issued property for the past two years, I just want to make sure I know it's a new owner that's taking over the space, if I, a new leasing, I should say, correct?
Yes, please, come forward and introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Shavel Abu Fayad. I own CJ Motors in Beverly since 2015.
Fantastic.
And that's going to be a second location.
So, just a couple of questions, I know before it was a nonconforming use, and the owner of the property was leasing a multitude of 20 cars, I know there was problems with that, and it's not necessarily yours, I just want to make sure there's awareness, and I know the other part of the problem that going for two years was the lack of communication between the building commissioner, as well as the city clerk's office, so I want to make sure that's just kind of established.
Answered, so the old owner, there was like multiple tenants there. Now, I took over everything, so I'm the only tenant over there. As far as the license, it was for 25 cars, then there was like all kind of trash, you know the property?
I do, very well.
This is right by the Paul House, correct?
Yes.
It was only licensed for one car they were selling.
So, Mr. Steve, he saw the property like when I was working on it, like you are welcome to pass by and check it out, it's clean, I painted everything, the pumps, it's good. So, then we had to go for a special permit for the license, which was approved for eight cars.
Before the Zoning Board of Appeals, correct? Yes.
So, and I'm the only person over there.
May I?
Yes, please.
So, you owned the building, the property, so you just, okay, so you, are you leasing the gas station as well?
Yeah, I'm leasing everything.
Okay, so it is one, because that was the other issue, like you said, was the gas station, and there was the U-Haul, and there was the, you know.
There was like, that's the comments I'm getting from people when they pass by, like they are kind of like happy with the way like the building looks, because it's been ran down like for maybe like 50 years, like it's always like not looking good, and so I did my part, and I'm the only one like over there, like there is no other person, and.
Fantastic, I wish you well, I hope you're very successful there, and again, I just, you know, the key is the communication piece, and as well as your knowing of what the property can and can't do, I think that was part of the issue too, was what the property owner was telling, I, like I said, I just want to make sure you going into this is well aware, because I know there were some issues prior to that.
For, I know like it's residential and a, like it's commercial, but it's residential, and like it's, I'm aware of, but anything I should be aware of, like unusual, beside the use of the property, like anything like on the property?
No, I think just, I think the proper storage was one of the, you have a, you know, a stream behind you and all that stuff, but those are the.
I clean.
No, no, it is, looks much cleaner.
And Mr. Steve, he saw like everything, but I'm waiting just for a little bit for winter, because there is so much trees, and like you cannot see like well, like to clean more, but I did good, like you are welcome to stop by.
No, I've seen, I've seen you paint in the.
Oh, you saw?
Arning and everything, no, again, I want to wish you luck, again, it was the biggest thing, is making sure the communication and what was lack of at the time earlier on.
No, like communication, I think like I, I'm the only one, I got a long-term lease on the property, hopefully I'll be able to buy it, which I doubt, that's.
All right, I'm good, thank you so much.
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions, the building, the structure inside, is that going to be used for a convenience store, is it strictly for servicing the sale of vehicles and the gas pumps?
So, the convenience store license, it's there, but it's never been used. When we got the license, like the special permit for the eight cars, it was replacing like the U-Haul, there was like space for eight U-Haul, they were converted to the car states. Convenience store, I'm not going to run a convenience store, it's going to be repair, the dealership, and the gas station.
Okay, and the.
The license, actually, I don't think like when they get it like back in 2011, I think, they applied for, but never like.
Never used it. Yeah, I agree with Counselor Rotundo, that the presence of petroleum products that are coming and going out of vehicles so close to a stream is problematic, but I know that double-walled containment, concrete containment's are what are code presently for the storage of gasoline, I believe? Is that correct?
It's highly regulated, like it has to be like double-wall tanks, so in case of leak, it will detect the leak from the inner tanks to the, like before it goes like to the.
It stays inside the same?
Yeah, so there is like a, like a space, annular space between the actual tank and like protecting tank around it, so if there is any release, it will notice the release on the second tank wall before it goes to the.
Okay.
So, it's highly, highly regulated, like from D P and.
Okay, well, I'm glad you're familiar with the regulations and can describe it, it reassures me that what's supposed to be the case is in fact the case, so, thank you.
And also, like another thing, it's the way you run the, you know, like the repair, like there is so much like hazardous material, like you have to be knowledgeable like how to deal with those, you know, like you cannot like throw oil, and I'm telling you, like the place, it's, I admit it, and when we came for the special permit for the license, I didn't say nothing, because all the components, they are legit, like if I'm running a business or I'm a customer, I'm not going to stop by when I see like a place like that, so.
Okay, good, well, again, I also wish you best of luck and success in running the business, thank you.
That's the second time, back in 2015, you wished me luck, and that's my second location. Hopefully, it doesn't take me another 10 years for the third.
Any other questions from the subcommittee? No? In that case, I would entertain a motion to approve Order Number 205. All those in favor? Aye, motion carries 3-0. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You bet, appreciate it. The last item is Order 206, this is proposed amendments to two different locations, one in Ward 4 at 17 Orchard Street, and one at 25 and 1/2 Atlantic Street. In both cases, Counselor Spang and I have worked with the Traffic Sergeant, Traffic Sergeant Nicholson, and the Solicitor's Office, both in terms of reviewing the appropriateness of, excuse me, of the locations, and with the Solicitor's Office in terms of the proper language to amend the ordinance to allow these two handicap spots. I'm happy to entertain any questions you might have for me on Order Number 206. Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve 206. All those in favor? Motion carries 3-0. And I believe that's everything we have on our agenda this evening, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn Legal Affairs at 7:29 this evening. All those in favor? Motion carries 3-0, we are adjourned. We are adjourned.
Thank you very much, everyone. I'll call the council back to order following that recess. We do have Mayor Mike Cahill with us now. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, for joining us. And as I mentioned, our city solicitor Beth Oldmixon is also here with us this evening. And so, Mayor, thank you. I know we have on our agenda sort of this is a two-part, potentially a two-part conversation, but this first portion, a discussion regarding Teamsters Local 25 strike and delivery of services by Republic Services, Inc., is in open session, of course, and we appreciate you being here. I know we had that chance to have a special meeting earlier this summer. You offered us some updates and explained some of what the city was doing and in partnership with other communities. So it feels like the right time to invite you back to share any other updates. Or, of course, residents and councillors know, as well as you, that each day we're getting an update. The strike is not resolved. Sort of an unfolding situation. So, thank you for being here. We welcome...
Of course, of course, happy to share a couple of thoughts and try to answer some questions. Good to see you all. Hope everybody's enjoyed your summers. I think the solicitors here, more than anything, to raise their hand if we go into areas that need to be discussed in executive session. And so, that's I'm sure where she will do most of her talking. So, yeah, I mean, I think this is day 62, or 63, or 64. It's, you know, we're into our, it's the third month that this has been going on. I believe it might be the longest trash strike in quite a while, anywhere, ever. I don't know about, you know, that specifically, but, you know, we know this is Republic Services who are contracted to pick up our trash and recycling. We know that the Teamsters represent their drivers, mechanics, collectors, and dispatchers. Those are the four different profile of jobs that make up the union membership of about 350. And we know that, you know, this has been going on a while. I will say that we found out that last Thursday was the first mediation in about five weeks. So, all that time that they weren't going to the table, they were back at the table last Thursday. I don't want to put too much emphasis on it, but maybe, just maybe, that's a good sign, and hopefully. So, as far as where we are with their, the services they are and are not providing, I first want to say since it's quarter to eight, and the phone call that I made a while ago this evening, about an hour and 15, I don't know, about an hour ago, said to people that there are some maps on the website that they can look to, to see whether their street, if they're a regular Friday customer, to see whether their street has been picked up yet. And the team that's trying to put the maps up on the website has been struggling with the website. So, they're not quite up there yet. But suffice to say that a chunk of the Friday route got done and a chunk of it didn't. Councilor Crowley, your house did not get done, but it's on the map for tomorrow. Councilor Feldman, yours is on the map for tomorrow. I'd like to think that most everybody who looks when the maps are up and available will see that Republic at least knows what they didn't get. So, you know, here's where we've been. We all know that early on in the strike, Republic did no trash, no recycling pickup, really, none for the whole month of July. They started out poorly on trash, and then they caught up, but it took them between two and three weeks to get in a rhythm on trash. And in the early days of the strike, there were neighborhoods that didn't have their trash picked up for, you know, 14 to 18 or so days. And that was a real problem initially. The recycling became a problem, you know, not too much longer because, you know, unfortunately, some neighborhoods don't have a whole lot of capacity for storing safely. And other neighborhoods that do, people still were putting recycling out, and once it was out, they didn't want to bring it back in. So, we had this dynamic, as you know well. So, we, when we went to court back in July to say that Republic was not performing on their contract and specifically looking for some remedy, we knew it would be a challenge to get the judge to be able to agree to a remedy when the real charge is, hey, they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing. And Republic's response was, we can't. But the good, probably the best outcome from that process was that in the filing, we, in Beverly, our health department did a great job of documenting with lots of pictures. All the commercial, private dumpster contracts they had that they weren't picking up. And that was, you know, as we were looking at them not getting up to speed on our residential and small business customers, they also were letting everything go with their whole private contract side. And that became a real public health concern very quickly. So, the good outcome of us going to court was that they, frankly, I think they got embarrassed, and they were able to pull some resources additional and put them to the commercial, which has gone well for a while. But things are struggled, we're in a, they're in a struggling point now because some of the workers they brought in from out of state, and I've said this, but probably not everybody watching either remembers or has even listened to this conversation before, they're a big company. They're the second largest hauler in the country. About 85% of their workforce is non-union from other parts of the country, so they brought people in from those other parts of the country. They've never brought enough in to really service us, and we fought that fight with them for, you know, for going on, how many weeks are we, 10 weeks? In week 10, I think. So, where we're at now with them is, some of the people who were here all summer decided they'd had enough and went home. And so, they've now brought in some new people who are, need to become familiar with our communities. And hopefully, this strike's going to end really soon, and we don't have to wait for them to become familiar. But that's some of the dynamic. Things got so bad with recycling that we did a couple of things. We pushed and pushed for Republic to start picking up curbside recycling, and if you remember, they started around about the beginning of August with one truck a day, some days, and then a couple Saturdays, they were able to give us extra trucks. But what was happening, as we all have experienced, is with several weeks of recycling built up, once they started with one truck and two trucks, they weren't getting very far. So, there was a point where I worked out with them that they put all five trucks on recycling for one day, and that was a couple of Mondays ago, right, maybe three Mondays ago. And we thought, okay, here's a good faith effort to really pick up a whole day, but they didn't even do that. With five trucks, they were not able to get all of the Thursday, regular Thursday, if you remember that. So, at that point, with so much recycling, having been out and baking, and eventually getting soggy, and recognizing that a lot of the metal and plastic and glass has had food in it, and not everybody rinses everything out as well as other people. And so, you've got, you've got a lot of contamination in that recycling, both the cardboard and the other pieces. And so, at a certain point, the governor said, you know, any community that needs help on this from DEP, we will provide a waiver to pick up recycling as trash for a brief period to try to get it cleared out because of the public health concerns with it. So, we went that route, two weeks, well, we're in our second week of it, and it's a two-week waiver. Prior to that, we got DEP to waiver the tonnage limitation on the Danvers transfer site with the hope that Beverly trucks, Republic trucks servicing Beverly could go to Danvers, drop a load of trash or recycling, and come back for more in a given day, because they've been having a real hard time getting to do more than one load a day. Before the strike, this was a problem in that there were never enough, there aren't enough in the way of end-site resources. End-site just means the trash either goes to a transfer station, or it goes to an incinerator. And this was a problem before the strike, and it's been much more of a problem since, because, as you're all aware, the striking workers have not been happy that there are replacement workers doing their work. So, you know, they have, where they've been able to, they have picketed and protested, and that slowed down a lot of the movement, right? So, I don't want to ramble too much, but I guess I'll say, we got these waivers in place, and we're in the second week, and I, my hope is this week will go better. Last week was a really hard week for Republic. I had tried to really hammer home to them prior to last week that with taking recycling and trash altogether, and a lot of stored-up materials, that it was going to go slowly, and they needed to bring more trucks and crews. And, you know, the ability to go back and forth to Danvers was supposed to help, it helped some, but it's still been problematic. And so, we start this week, today being the first day of the week, for, you know, back to work, they were really about two and a half days behind, right? Now, they're going to work through Saturday, and I keep pushing to try to help them to understand that they've got to get through everything this week. Now, it should be easier, because most of the days, right, only have about eight to 10 days' worth of trash and recycling to pick up. It would be seven, but it's with the holiday, right, it's a little longer. So, hopefully, that'll go better this week. And let me see if I have anything else to share before going to questions. Oh, the recycling at Stanley Street. So, we took one of the dumpsters from the DPS yard and brought it to Stanley, so there are four there now. And you've heard me say in some of the recent calls, letting people know, if you still want your recycling to be recycled, you know, please bring it over to Stanley Street. Those dumpsters are being brought by Millennium, which is the company. Millennium's bringing them to the Casella recycling facility, I think it's in Cambridge. And so, you know, if they really want to recycle, and a lot of people do, that's the place to go. It's very quickly filling up every day, and DPS is doing the best they can to manage that site. That's a site that, you know, we pay Republic to manage that compost site, and they're not doing it, so we're doing it. But managing the dumpsters is work, and what happens is, a lot of people are bringing over their boxes without breaking them down. They're bringing, you know, plastic jugs of things and not breaking them down. And so, that's a plea that I made in tonight's phone call that I'll repeat here. For people bringing their things over there, please take those couple extra minutes to flatten out any cardboard and to flatten out, you know, milk jugs and things like that, because otherwise, everything just fills up with, you know, with air. And until the, you know, until an employee can get over there and knock everything down with the front, with the bucket, then it's unusable. So, between, knocking the materials down, because you can always fit more, up until you need to swap them out. Between that and having Millennium on speed dial, we're trying to move things through there so people can take advantage of that. What else? Oh, we got our first invoice from Republic late last week, first invoice since the strike started. And we've had a lot of conversation with them about costs that we have been incurring to do work that they're supposed to do, as well as services that they're not providing, that they're supposed to provide under the contract. So, they've given us a draft invoice with some acknowledgements of things they haven't done, and that's good. And we're going to take that and compare that against what we put together. The DPS business manager, Tracy Reardon, has been gathering and compiling a spreadsheet of all the different things we've spent money on, things from additional extermination services from A1, to DPS workers and police working, you know, overtime details, to Jason Foster, our full-time, he's half-recycling coordinator, and he's half-enforcement of various things in the engineering departments per view, and he's been spending full-time on this all summer. So, things like that, that we are, you know, gathering the information, and we will put numbers to everything, and we'll talk this through with Republic. We're not going to pay anything to them. We haven't written them a check, paid them a penny since the strike started, and we won't until we go through this process of trying to make sure that we account for all the things that they haven't done and all the things we've had to do in their place, and withhold sums of money to line up to all that. And just a couple of examples of things that they haven't done. I said that they acknowledged they provided no recycling in the month of July, and they gave us an almost 100% credit on recycling cost in their July invoice when they put it in front of us. Very little and very inconsistent bulk item pickup, and as we all know, any customer has a right to put out one bulk item a week. So, that's been, you know, woeful on their part. They have not done a white goods pickup either month, either July or August. And they, we pay them monthly to manage the compost site, and they haven't managed that because the staff that they had on that are part of the striking union members. So, I'll stop there. I'm sure you folks have thoughts or questions.
Thank you, Mayor. Councillors will go to questions from the council. I see Councilor Rotondo's hand first.
Mayor, I know you just were speaking about the trash and the recycling, and I know there's two different rates that we pay. In these next two weeks, obviously, our recycling's being, is it being charged as trash? And I don't know if you have the answer, but that's one of the things that we shouldn't, I feel we shouldn't be penalized for inadequacy of them being able to separate the recycling from the trash, and, you know, it's all being lumped in. I know I've seen neighbors with their leaves being thrown into the trash truck as well. So, appreciative that it's gone and that, but from a financial standpoint, I don't think it's our, you know, responsibility to pay in that additional money that it's all being treated as trash because of their inability to pick up the recycling properly. So, I don't know if that's something that's been discussed or will be discussed.
It will be. I mean, I appreciate the flag on it. As I said, they just invoiced us, and we're both calling it a draft invoice, for July. It'll be a while before we see an invoice on August. And it sounds, you know, it seems a simple way to manage it would be to charge everything at the lower rate, but certainly, you know, we'll probably have a good amount of back and forth on that point. But thank you for putting a flag on it, for sure.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Feldman, and then Sweeney, and then St. Hillary.
Yes, thank you. And thank you for the update. My first question was the same as councillor Rotondo's, but my second question was, what is, when it's not the Danvers, do we have consistent use of the Danvers transfer station? And then, what is the transfer station that we usually use under the contract when? I'm just trying to remember.
Right. So, typically in the contract, in normal times, typically, things are going straight over to one of the incinerators. Because one of the, one of the points in our contract is, we don't allow them to, we don't allow them to take our trash to a landfill. And that's because of the, I mean, that was in the contract with JRM, and they inherited that. So, the stuff that they're bringing to transfer stations now, generally, the transfer is just a way to put it in a much bigger dumpster, so that when they go get in line at the, at the incinerator, they're in line with a much bigger load, and it's more efficient, because the wait times, even, you know, even pre-strike, the wait times could be significant. And so, that's a method they've used for a while. They'll dump the, you know, the trucks right into a much larger dumpster, and eventually, hook up a big truck to that and go to the incinerator. So, where we've been, where they've been bringing our trash, it's been the incinerator, it's been the PBD transfer station, because it has a higher capacity, a higher tonnage capacity. So, what had been happening is, a lot of the union activity and picketing and slowing down entrance and exit of vehicles from the facilities was going on at the PBD transfer site. And, you know, they were only, there's been a dynamic where the Teamsters and local police in various communities have agreed on a structure, and they're allowed to slow things by so many minutes per truck, which, it's what's happening, right? And so, if a truck only gets in every seven minutes or every nine minutes, that's further delaying what's already a slow process. So, part of our getting the waiver at Danvers was, Danvers is closer, and there really hadn't been any activity there to slow down the operations. We got the waiver from DEP, but they didn't give the waiver to us exclusively. It was a tonnage increase. So, it has helped us, Republic, much as I would, you know, would say to them, you know, please just use Beverly trucks, but, you know, there's not a, there's not a barrier to them bringing a truck filled with trash from Gloucester, or Ipswich, or wherever else there as well. As I said, it's been helping. One of the ways it can help is if a truck leaves Beverly full towards the end of the day, they have time to drop their load as long as it doesn't take them two to three hours. So, they go to Danvers, and they drop it there, and they go back to the yard with an empty truck. So, in the morning, they don't have to waste time waiting in line to drop, which has been a big problem for them. So, there's been some benefit to the Danvers opportunity. Wish it was more, but yeah, there's been some benefit.
Thank you, councillor Feldman. Councillor Sweeney.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Mayor, for the update, and for the updates you and your administration have provided throughout the summer. I'm glad to hear that we brought in a third party to service the recycling drop-off center and to open that drop-off center off at Stanley Street, essentially throughout the week on a rolling basis. I think that was something that I had advocated for early on, and I really appreciate you guys pursuing that opportunity. Do we know, so for Millennium, how frequently are they emptying the dumpsters? Is it on a recurring basis, or is it as they have the capacity to do so?
So, a couple things. When you said "third party," now I understand. You're talking about Millennium. So, first, the Stanley Street site has been really operated by DPS. So, it's been, you know, we're opening it every morning and closing it later in the day with DPS staff. We're handling the management of the load and the dumpsters with DPS staff. Millennium is a company that Republic contracted with, and so, initially, Republic was doing all of the coordinating with Millennium, but that was not at all efficient, and we weren't getting good responses. So, we started, we started talking directly with the Millennium team a few weeks ago. So, Commissioner Collins is talking every day with his contacts at Millennium, and just trying to track how the dumpsters are looking, and when, you know, when they're ready, when they are ready, and when they need to be swapped out. And Millennium's been, you know, a couple of hiccups initially, but now they're in a rhythm. They're, when we ask them to, they're coming in within a day and getting those full, what they, what they try to do is bring it empty, leave it, take away a full. And so, you know, they do that on a, really on a, it's really been a daily conversation with the commissioner, and it's not a daily request to swap out. It's kind of tracking where things are at and trying to tee up that next, that next process. Because what Millennium tries to do is, because there are five dumpsters in Beverly of theirs, one at DPS, and now four at Stanley, because we moved one, they're trying to, they'll dedicate a full day to Beverly, and just back and forth, back and forth, to swap those out.
Okay. So, thank you for that clarification. And it sounds like, then, the current arrangement is workable enough to the point that we don't, as a city, feel the need to bring in another company to service a larger subset of recycling drop-off dumpsters at this point.
I mean, I think what, I think what I've learned, and I've tried to share this a couple of times, a number of the waste haulers who also do business in this state have Teamsters as employees, and they don't want to go near that picket line. So, you know, first off, it's hard to get anybody to, you know, to really respond. And as I've said before, you know, one of the companies that said they would be willing to try to help us out, the ramp-up time, they don't own trucks to put to our needs. They don't retain staff, because, you know, what business model could handle that? So, initially, when we talked about near-term help within the strike, it really didn't make sense, because they were talking two to three, or even longer months, to get trucks in, maybe a little less time to hire and train, but certainly, the trucks are a big struggle for, you know, for these companies. So, you know, and I have had people reach out and say, well, you know, enough already, just get rid of them, right? So, early on, had we tried to, well, there's still that problem of significant ramp-up time for anybody to make the capital investments and hire staff. But even as we're talking long-term, it's, you know, our contract lasts till next June 30. Had we, had we tried to kind of jump quickly, you know, there is language in our contract, as in most of the communities, that said that a strike is one of those actions that you can't, that is not deemed a breach of contract, unless it becomes an unreasonably-long, you know, event. And we weren't there right away, and unreasonable is a very subjective term that would be, you know, it'd be up to a judge to try to sort through competing arguments. I think it's clear it's been, it's unreasonable now. I don't know at what point in the 63 or 64 days it became unreasonable in terms of a legally winnable argument. But where we are today is still, I think, we're looking at June 30. We have, we're well into beginning, kind of digging into the research of where we might go as a community, the kind of things that we would, am I getting over the line? Getting close, okay. The type of things, you know, that would go into what our next trash recycling, composting, you know, array of services might look like for our community. So, I'll stop there.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. I think that covered my question. Primarily, what I was, during our last meeting, the point I wanted to make is, if there were ways with that understanding, obviously, that companies didn't want to get involved, and that the lead-up time to replacing entirely our current curbside collection service really isn't feasible, are there within, you know, with that understanding, ways we could supplement service that Republic was barely providing with temporary workers? And one of those ways that I had discussed was if we could bring in a third party to collect, or to empty dumpsters at a central location, which it sounds like Millennium is that third party, Republic has brought them in, and they are emptying the dumpsters at central locations, Public Services and Stanley Street with enough regularity that there doesn't seem to be a need to bring in another company and another subset of dumpsters, because we don't have the capacity at Stanley Street. Is that an accurate characterization of how things stand currently?
I think, I think we're getting there. I mean, the fact that, you know, that we're close to caught up on recycling, you know, the last couple of staffed drop-offs that we did at DPS and at Stanley Street were definitely, the first few were manageable, then there was one where there was a really high, high demand. And then, the last couple kind of tailed off again. Not that a lot of people didn't come, because a lot did, but we still had capacity left over. And so, this does seem to be working. There have been, I know one of the things you were asking about, and a couple folks have raised with me, is the idea of putting dumpsters in other parts of the city. One of the challenges is putting a dumpster in a place that you can't control access to it, you know, and particularly, three weeks ago, four weeks ago, when the, it feels very recent that Millennium's got on top, gotten on top of things, because there was a period where we were just calling them every day, and they were promising swap-outs, and then it wasn't happening. So, you know, there, around about the time when there was a little more of a conversation about trying to provide more opportunities, more places, that was the dynamic, that they weren't, they weren't as good at that point as they're showing themselves to be now at getting those dumpsters swapped. And it really is a concern. I mean, obviously, at DPS and at Stanley Street, we can lock gates and, you know, and manage access to those dumpsters so that they don't get out of control.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. And I also want to thank the Public Services employees. I know you mentioned they've gone above and beyond serving the city throughout this difficult time, so certainly want to thank them for their efforts.
Thanks.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much, councillor. Councillor Saint-Hilaire and then we'll go to councillor Bowen.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, you referenced costs incurred by the city. Do you have a dollar figure on that or rough amount?
No. I mean, it'll be significant. Well, you think about the, I don't know how many total we did of the staff drop-offs, but we did them at two sites, maybe about five times. So, you know, there's a, there's a number there for, for police details in DPS over time. No, I don't have a number. I mean, it'll come together. We'll, we'll share it out clearly. An example of a monthly bill, the recycling monthly bill for Beverly is about 110,000 a month. Because they acknowledged that they picked up no recycling in July, they credited us 95% of that. I may take, take issue with their suggesting that they picked up one day's worth of recycling in July. You know, we'll, you know, we'll dig into that, but that's an example. The compost site, they manage it for us for about 12,500 a month and they haven't done any of that because as I said, those two employees are on strike. So, but, you know, we'll, please let's follow up because we, we're not in a rush to make a payment to them. We've got a lot of other things we're focusing on and so we haven't looked that hard at what they sent us last week yet, but it's, you know, it's going to get a lot of attention before anything would go out the door.
Quick follow-up, Mayor. And what about the Republic invoice? What is the amount on that that's outstanding?
I'd have to pull it up and open it and look at it. It hasn't been a priority. It came in late Thursday. What I said, when I said the 111 is, is the average monthly for recycling, I said that because when he was talking with me about it before sending it, he used those numbers. So what we pay monthly for trash, I knew it. I've forgotten it. It's in the invoice. But, you know, our, our annual cost is just about 3.6 million. So if you do that over 12 months, you know, there's roughly the monthly.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Bowen and then councillor Rotundo.
Thank you. So two questions I think haven't been covered yet. One, in our last meeting on this topic, I asked about whether there were ways we could publicize the option for residents to also have curbside compost pickup, which goes through Black Earth. It's a separate contract, but they get credit back on their trash bill for removing so much weight and particularly food waste is, is part of the problem. So wondering if, if there's an update on sort of uptick or, or more we can do to encourage people to, to take advantage of that option and also whether there was, has been or is now an option to expand the city's Black Earth compost pickup sites that downtown residents have access to, whether putting some of those in other neighborhoods where people may not have curbside yet, but could temporarily use those.
I, I think there's a lot that needs to be done and there's a lot of opportunity. In order to keep doing all the other work that's been coming across my plate all summer, I haven't participated in trying to promote those two things because it, it can't just be all trash all day, every day, right? I mean, there's a lot of things that we, that we've got to get done. I think it's, as much as anything, it's, it's coming out of this strike that the real opportunity might be and, you know, might be, yeah, there, there's a ceiling on the number of people who are willing to pay extra, you know, to, to compost. You know, I know some of us do it, many of us do it, but, you know, it's, it's been in place, it's been promoted a lot over the years. And I agree with you that this is, this is a time to try to ratchet it up. So when we talked last, I agreed with you and said, let's try to do it and it just hasn't, I haven't had the bandwidth to do it in the meantime. I know Green Beverly recognizing that has, you know, they've tried to make a push for it. And then to add, the second piece was the residents who can't compost at the curb but want to participate in the program we've got. I agree with you on both points, so maybe, you want to help?
Yes, I would love to help.
Let's try to, let's try to fit it into the next handful of days of, of notices.
Yeah, that would, that would be great. And I know our sustainability office, which has managed those downtown compost drop-off sites, is also shorthanded at the moment, so everybody's stretched. So, yeah, I will follow up and see how I can do. I have one other question, if I may. I'm, I'm just curious and it may be for the executive session on legal strategy, so wave if need be, but in thinking about the costs to the city of Republic not providing the services we've contracted for, I'm curious how or whether we can account for the additional burden on residents and businesses who, you know, in addition to us as a city collectively and through taxpayer funds currently, until hopefully we're, we're able to claw some back, have funded overtime for DPS workers to man the drop-off sites for recycling. Residents have spent time away from everything else they would be doing to go and drop off. People have, you know, had to store things in places they aren't used to. People have had to figure out what to do. Some people have called private haulers themselves to have things removed. Some people are trying not to put out much because they don't want to cross the picket line in that way. So there's been a lot of kind of individual impacts, but that are community-wide and, and those are harder to quantify. They're not necessarily hard costs, but, but when I think about the overall impacts and the overall costs, it's not just our collective taxpayer dollars, it's all of our time and effort and inconvenience as well. So wondering if there's some way for the city to, to help quantify that or to help individuals or businesses that have been more directly impacted, sort of seek that recourse themselves. You know, I, I think it's helpful that the, the Health Department was able to document the health impacts of private businesses that have dumpsters from Republic not getting picked up, but, but more broadly, like, is there anything that, that we can do to help people bridge that gap or that we can do as a city to be compensated collectively for all of those additional harms?
A lot there. You know, I, I don't want to overspeak because it's going to take some time for everything to settle, right? You know, we believe that when, that when this is done with, we will have withheld a significant amount of money from them, yet at the same time, say the strike settles next week, right? It's a two-month-and-a-week strike and, you know, just doing simple math, right, and not, not being held to it, right? If, if 3.6 divided by 12, help me out, divided by 10 is 360,000, divided, about 300K, yes? So, I mean, so we're talking about 600K, but they have done some of what they're contracted to do, so it wouldn't be that. It'll be some lower number that we might ultimately successfully withhold. Well, some of it is going to pay costs that we've incurred, right? So some smaller number at the end of this whole process might be a number that we don't ultimately get billed and we'll see what's possible to do with that, you know, to try to, you know, to try to look at every, you know, every customer in the program and do we, do we kind of spread something over that? I think regardless of the impact, and a lot of people are feeling a lot of impact, you know, if there is something that we collectively can do as relief, I think of necessity, it'll end up being modest because it, for all, you know, for all that we're, that we as a community are going through, I think the dollars aren't going to be some kind of, what's the word? I don't know. Windfall, right? That, that we don't end up paying.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Rotundo will come back around to you.
I think you answered it, Mayor, that I was going to ask. Basically, the simpler, what I was asking is if there were any money left after paying, would there be ever any consideration of giving back to the ratepayers? You know, whether it's, and I know it could be 10, I mean, we're paying 25. I know that question has been, and you've seen it on Facebook, we've all seen and heard it, is, well, are we going to get money back because we're not getting the services? Although we are getting them, just not as quickly. So I think just that was really the question.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a fair question. I think we all would like to be in a position to, to do that. I just, I just caution that I don't think it's going to be a big dollar amount for any one customer when it's all said and done, if we do that, you know?
Thank you, councillor. Are there any other questions or comments from the council at this time? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, councillors. Thank you, Mayor, for coming and offering both an update and then answering questions as well. And I'm glad, as always, that Bev Cam is here. Kim, thank you for being here so that folks can follow this or watch it later and be able to get maybe answers to questions that they too are having as, as we're moving through this difficult time. So the other item that was listed under Presentations, Awards and Memorials that we now come back to, we did take our agenda out of order, is a proposed executive session. Before we go to take a vote on whether or not to enter into executive session, because if we do vote to do so, we will not return to open session, I just wanted to give councillors an opportunity to, if there are any announcements or reminders, we usually do that at the end of the meeting, if there is anything, I wanted to do that before we potentially close our open session. Councillor Rotundo.
Just reminding everyone, Harbor Fest is this weekend. It's Sunday, 1 to 5 down at Lynch Park, so come join us. There's a lot of new events being offered and it looks like it's going to be a beautiful day.
Thank you very much, councillor. Are there other reminders or updates from any councillors that you wish to share? Okay. Well, I will just mention then, by way of reminder, that we're back into our regular meeting schedule now. And so our next regular meeting, this is of course a Tuesday meeting because of the Monday holiday, but we'll be back to our every other Monday for regular council meetings. And so our next regular meeting will be September 15th at 7 o'clock PM here in council chambers or of course live on Bev Cam, thanks to that team. And also today was of course the first day of school with students at Beverly Public Schools. Our, our faculty, educators, building staff, care professionals had launched a last week and so it's of course not their first day, but it is the first day with students in our schools. And so I just wanted to mention that and also thank all of the dedicated staff who worked so hard to get ready for today to welcome students. So, thank you, if anyone is watching. So now we do have this proposed executive session regarding the City of Beverly et al. v 623 Landfill Inc., an indirect and wholly owned subsidiary of Republic Services Incorporated et al., Essex County Superior Court Case Number 2577 CV 00758. So to enter into executive session will require a roll call vote and then we will need to take any other votes by roll call. As I mentioned, the city council will not return. Should we vote to enter into executive session, we will not return to open session following the executive session. We will adjourn from executive session. So I'm looking for a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 3, so that we may discuss pending litigation in the matter City of Beverly et al. v 623 Landfill Inc., an indirect and wholly owned subsidiary of Republic Services Incorporated et al., Essex County Superior Court Case Number 2577 CV 00758. The purpose of the executive session is to discuss strategy with respect to this litigation. As president of the city council, I declare that an executive session is necessary because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the city's litigation position. Is there a motion to enter into executive session? Second. Thank you. We will need to roll call vote for this. So Ms. Kent.
Bowen. Riley.
Yes.
Feldman.
Yes.
Housman.
Yes.
Rotundo.
Yes.
Spang.
Yes.
Saint-Hilaire.
Yes.
Sweeney.
Yes.
And Flowers.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. So that is 9-0, that we will enter into executive session and we will, again, not return to open session and will adjourn from that executive session. Thanks very much. Thanks to Bev Cam and thanks to all our city staff who joined us this evening.